Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the August 12th meeting of the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission meeting. If you're here during the meeting and it's time for the public to speak either during public comment or a public hearing, if you'll please come forward to the podium and the microphone, give us your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Please limit your comments to items that are on our agenda this evening and address your comments directly to the Planning Commission. I appreciate you, everybody in attendance. I'll now call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Commissioner Dutton, would you please lead us in an indication to pledge allegiance?
Yes, sir. Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, thank you for the opportunity for us to be together this evening. We ask that you help us conduct the business of this meeting in a manner that reflects your kingdom. May your spirit inspire us to make decisions that are just, fair, and beneficial to our community. Lord, give us the inspiration to be shining examples of your goodness and truth. In your name we pray. Amen. Please rise and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have tonight before us the agenda that has been published and printed. And before you, do I have any corrections or changes to the agenda? Or do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented and published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have one administrative item to come up next, and that's the election of a secretary, given the departure of our past secretary, Mr. Bob Cooper. I'll open the floor for nominations for Secretary of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, should he be willing to accept it, I would like to nominate Commissioner Williams to serve as secretary.
Second.
All right, I have a nomination and a second for Rob Williams to serve as the Secretary of the Planning Commission. Mr. Williams, are you willing to accept that position?
I'm honored and willing to serve.
Thank you very much. Do I have any other nominations? All right, Heather, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. Thank you very much for serving, Rob. All right, we have also published before us the minutes of the meeting from July 8th. Do I have any corrections or additions to those minutes that have been published?
Move that be accepted.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now comes the time for public comment. I think we have one person who's registered for public comment. Ms. Tricia Corrad, is that's the way, I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. Corrade. If you could please repeat your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Tricia Corade. I live at 415 West Pine Street in the city of Johnson City. Thank you for the opportunity. I stand before you in opposition of the voluntary annexation, item number 7.3, on purely financial reasons. The city's financial assessment shows capital investment of $48,703 to connect one residential property to our systems. No payback period over the 10-year analysis. There is no economic stimulation to this, and it does nothing to progress the housing shortage we face. In perspective, $48,703. 2023 census data median household income for the city of Johnson City, $55,429, per capita income of $36,451. And we're considering $48,000 to connect one residential property. Let's look at it a different way. Property tax roll, June 2nd, 2025, the 28,660 residential properties that pay taxes in the city of Johnson City, average tax bill, $825.69. It will take 59 property tax bills, full year property tax bills, to cover $48,703 investment to connect one residence. I understand that water and sewer is an enterprise fund and therefore self-sustaining. The fact that property taxes don't directly pay for the capital investments do not mean that we should turn away from fiscally irresponsible decisions. The city has limited resources. We all know $27 million hit to the reserve. We know there's higher priorities than connecting one residence. That does not drive economic stimulus or help with the housing shortage. This means tough decisions. And $48,000 may not sound like a big tough decision right now, but $48,000 for one residence, the four properties across the street, one on each side, all of a sudden it's $340,000. All of the contiguous properties that sit in this little cluster in the county, it's millions of dollars. No economic stimulus, no help to the housing shortage. I understand the desire to live within the city. It's why I chose that. The fact that these property owners chose differently five years ago doesn't mean that every city resident should lose the finite resources that are available to all of us. I've read the bylaws for the Planning Commission. There is nothing that precludes you from taking financial considerations when putting forth a recommendation. I stand before you in opposition and ask you to recommend no to the City Commission.
We'll move to new business now, Section 7. The first item is the Watauga Road Concept Plan Amendment on Heidi's House of Hope. Ms. Putney, I believe you're presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight is a concept plan amendment request for Heidi's House of Hope on Watauga Road and Frank Jones Road. Tonight is the recommendation and public hearing for the Planning Commission, and if recommended, it would move forward to one reading at the City Commission on September 4th. The neighborhood meeting was held yesterday, and we will get to the comments on a later slide. Just, and this is going to look very similar to the commission as it was approved for rezoning in January, but to reorient the commission, it is the property outlined in red along Frank Jones Road and Watauga Road. And it was rezoned to RP3 for residential development. The request is to amend the previously approved plan to change the interior road network as there were issues when looking at the grade and actually grading the interior road. The current conditions still remain the same from the rezoning. Minor elevation changes on the front of the property and steep elevation changes as you go north. Previously stated, the property was rezoned in January of this year to RP3 to allow for 184 units. The previously approved concept plan had a total of 184 units, 380 parking spaces, and as you see here, had a loop road that included three public roads and three private roads. The new requested concept plan has a different interior road network. It gets rid of that loop road due to slope and grade issues along the ridge line where the, basically the power lines go. They are decreasing the unit count due to changing the road from 184 to 138, so a decrease of 46 units, and changing to four public roads and four private roads. A comparison of the previously approved concept plan and what they are now requesting. The new plan would be bound to 138 units. The proposed private roads will not be maintained by the city. They will remain private, but will be built to the standard, road standards of a private road with 19 feet minimum width of pavement. Staff does have concerns over where the cul-de-sacs going up the ridge are accessed by those private drives. And as mentioned in that staff report, we would take into consideration possibly relooking at those at a later date if come time for redesign of those two specific roads. But all other aspects of the plan, of the concept plan, remain unchanged, including the open space, landscape, buffering, and the deceleration lane on Watauga Road. Those are still in effect. The change in the concept plan is supported by Horizon 2045 due to healthy environments as the change in grade is still protecting the ridge line and decreasing the amount of road and dirt that has to be graded for the loop road that was originally proposed. And it is still promoting new development, multiple housing options, and a livable, walkable community. As previously mentioned, the neighborhood meeting was held last night. There were six attendees, and their main concerns were in line with the original rezoning of traffic on Watauga Road coming into the development and the road width of the deceleration lane and fire access. Staff recommends approval for the proposed amendment with further consideration of the private roads accessing off of the cul-de-sac. The plan does decrease the units to 46, excuse me, decrease by 46 units. There's still a mix of single-family, multifamily dwellings, providing an array of options. And it is in line with the Horizon 2045 policies. Again, staff would just like to reiterate that the cul-de-sacs may be further evaluated for feasibility for those private access roads. And if it's deemed not a major redesign, we would recommend that staff have the discretion to approve that plan.
Questions for staff?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I guess first, why so many private roads? Is it the cost of building to the city's road standard? Is that the reason behind the number of private roads?
The private roads that are depicted on the concept plan act more as driveways and private roads to parking lots. So it's not something that we typically see as public roads. The main access roads coming into the development, to the cul-de-sacs, are the public roads. But as depicted, your private roads are coming into kind of the parking lots here and then the access roads off of the public.
And then secondly, you said the staff does not recommend the access location of the private roads. What would your recommendations be then?
Staff just would like further consideration by the engineer and developer for the feasibility of the access of these private roads off the cul-de-sac due to potential congestion and confusion. There's nothing in the subdivision regulations that would prohibit them to be built to this standard and in this location. But it is, we would like to see further consideration if there's a potential redesign due to, again, congestion and confusion.
I have a question. Excuse me. I'll get in the habit of that. If there were objections to the traffic volume on the original one, and it was accepted, did you see any reduction in the objections with the reduction in the number of units? It's going to reduce the traffic volume to that much, to that degree. And it seems like in the community, concerns that that would reduce some of the objections there.
So the traffic impact analysis was completed rather, I believe, a few weeks ago. And that just reiterated the need for a deceleration lane. So the traffic concerns are going in and out of the development, kind of, since there's not been any development in that area. So with a decrease of 46 units, I would assume that there would be some decrease in traffic as well.
Further questions for staff?
I have one question. Can you point out where the surplus parking is on the revised plan?
There is no surplus parking. The parking allotment is, meets the parking requirement for the units proposed. So there's a multitude of different types of units, which requires a different amount of parking. So they're meeting the parking requirements with multiple parking lots, individual garages, and parking spaces for the, for the single-family residential homes. So there's a mix of parking lots, self-park garages, and driveways for the single-family residences.
For example, let me point out the private drive on the upper right-hand portion of the map. If you can point to that. How is parking available to those units on that private drive, which I believe will be not capable of taking path, being able to park along the private drive or pass another vehicle?
So as depicted on that plan, there are driveways, parking pads for those units, and they would be required to have a space and a half for each unit. So there's onsite parking.
A space and a half per unit. Okay.
Further questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Putney.
And it is a public hearing as well.
Okay. Seeing no other questions for staff, I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak to the question? Is there representatives from Heidi's House of Hope present? Does anybody, you want to come forward in case there's some questions? Or do you have anything you'd like to share with us? Ms. Schreiber?
Hi, I'm Lauren Schreiber from Heidi's House of Hope. The only thing I would say is that those buildings up on the right-hand side, they were going to be used most likely for like people's families. If they were visiting, they could stay in those. Based on the steepness of it, they're probably not likely unless we're able to get an easement around. And so we kind of just have them there just in case we can do it. And so that if we do end up adding them later, we don't have to come back through this process. So it's most likely not going to happen. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Schreiber? Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak to the question? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. All right, what do you think?
Mr. Chairman, I think I share staff's concerns. And I think some of the concerns that have been expressed from the commission with respect to the private driveways. I worry that those, they're really not practicable, whatever the intended use of the buildings that are off of those private driveways, given that we're parked basically for the units that are, for the units that are here. So I just, I don't think the design, I don't think the design's there in that respect. I can, with respect to the concept plan, in order to keep things moving on, I can get on board with staff's recommendation that we approve the, that we approve the concept plan. But again, I think with the qualification and the recorded notion that those driveways need to be relooked at and don't fly.
So that, did you put that in form of a motion?
I did not.
Okay.
Yeah. I can if you like.
Well, let's hold off. Let's see what other folks have to say.
I'm just curious if those cabins that are not going to be used full-time, if they're going to be on the rental market, if they're going to be on Airbnb, and what the impact of the overall project might be for those specific cabins on that private use road, if they're going to be available to general public or if they're just going to be only for the use of the people that live in Heidi's Hope Village.
Riley, can you speak to that?
So it's our understanding that those cabins in that location would be used for families of the residents that would be part of that community. And if I am misspeaking, but that was what was stated last night at the neighborhood meeting, was that those cabins would be used if a member had family come and they needed a place to stay.
Who would be responsible for maintaining those private roads if it's not going to be part of the city infrastructure?
So the developer, HOA, it would be the responsibility of the property owner.
Thank you.
So would there be a deed restriction that would enforce that use for that property?
For the homes.
For those small units at the end of the private drive?
So with it being RP3, they can operate as rentals, multifamily. So that is up to the developer and how they want to use those. That was just the statement that was made of their plan of using those.
Yeah, I'll have a little concern about the enforceability of that going forward.
But if they decide to keep it in line with family members or so forth, that can be a deed restriction.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion, further discussion. So I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the, I move that we approve the proposed amendment request with further consideration of the future private drives as expressed by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the request for an amendment to the concept plan at 01 Watauga Road, Heidi's House of Hope, and a second, discussion of the motion. I'm a bit curious how we'll, how staff will move that question forward, whether we're actually holding that as a withholding or a, just an advisory?
I think there's a notation now. As I understand it, the applicant will have to come back for a preliminary plat as well. So I mean, I think at that point, if the preliminary plat was not compliant or if those private driveways showed up on the, were on the preliminary plat, I would not be in favor of supporting that preliminary.
Very good. Thank you very much for that clarification. So we have a motion and a second, further discussion. Ms. Hatfield, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, we're ready to move to item 7.2, a final plat on Chestnut Valley subdivision. Ms. Putney's presenting again.
This is a final plat approval of Phase 1 of the Chestnut Valley subdivision. Planning Commission saw and approved the preliminary plat in April of this year for a 15-lot subdivision. This is for Phase 1 of 10 lots. The request is off of Haretown Road, kind of abutting against the ridges as depicted here. There we go, here in the black star. Just some aerial views of the property to kind of get a sense of the topography. It is sloped with, this is Haretown Road of the frontage, and from Haretown Road looking up at the property. Phase 1 of the final plat has 10 lots with shared driveways off of Haretown. It is zoned RP5 in a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. There's no sidewalk requirement on Haretown Road due to it being county-maintained. Open space requirements are being met with a walking and cart path. And one update from the staff report, because they continue to do work, is that the bond amount is being decreased to $198,000. So that will be the bond amount that the commission will be approving tonight for incomplete work. This is just a depiction of how their active space is being met with a cart path that will connect to the existing development and a nice walking path. Staff recommends approval of the final plat and the $198,000 bond to cover incomplete work.
Any questions for staff?
I actually have a question. That drainage pool that's at the end of the property near Price Road, is that part of the open space requirement of this type of zoning?
It's not included in, for this specific development, but stormwater retention ponds can be included in open space, but it was not calculated for this specific one.
Okay, and that would be county-maintained?
I believe the stormwater one, I may have to defer to our Public Works Department on that to see if that is within the county. I don't want to misspeak.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
The detention would be maintained privately. I guess the HOA or it wouldn't be the county or the city taking care of it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? I don't believe this item is appropriate for a public hearing, so discussion amongst us.
Mr. Chairman, I think this one's pretty straightforward, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the final plat as presented and acceptance of the bond in the amount of $198,000.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat on Chestnut Valley subdivision in addition to a $198,000 bond to complete work that's to be done. Any further discussion? Ms. Hatfield, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, now we'll move to item 7.3. I believe Mr. McNamara's up to present the proposal for a voluntary annexation on West Walnut Street. So we'll be discussing a plan of services and a possible zoning assignment.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brad McNamara, Planner 1 with the Planning Division. The item for your consideration this evening is a voluntary annexation at 3319 West Walnut Street. We will be reviewing the plan of services and zoning assignment. This is the second hearing of the timeline. The request to proceed was approved by the City Commission on June 5th. That was a unanimous vote this evening. Like I said, we will be looking at the plan of services and the zoning assignment. There will be a public hearing this evening. Moving forward, the next hearing would be the preliminary resolution and the first reading of the zoning assignment on September 4th. Within the notification timeline, two of these have been performed prior to the Planning Commission hearing, those being signs and letters, as well as posting the information on the city website. Additional notification processes will conspire after the first reading of the zoning assignment. The site is located at the corner of West Walnut Street and Matson Road. It's shown in the red highlighted area here. Zooming out a little further, you can see this, the zoomed out version shown in the red circle there. This is about two miles to the west of the Burlington mill site, down West Walnut. You can also see that Willow Springs is located to the south along Huffine and Antioch Road. Property owner requests annexation of their one parcel, site area of .62 acres, fronting West Walnut and Matson. This is contiguous to the current city limits via the right-of-way of West Walnut Street and is within the urban growth boundary and urban service area. The applicant has requested a zoning assignment of R2, low density. There is no development proposed with this annexation at this time. There is an existing single-family residence on the property which the property owner intends to maintain. A plan of services was developed. All applicable agencies within the city have been provided, have provided comments. Given the low-intensity district and nature of this site, as well as the no development being proposed, this is pretty straightforward. A lot of these have already been existing. I have noted that sewer and transit are the only two areas that are currently unavailable. We'll look first at the sewer line locations. We can see our subject site with the green star and the red outline located on the corner of Matson and Walnut. The orange/brown lines are the current locations of the sewer lines in this area. We can see this is essentially, there's sewer to the south, to the west, and to the east, however, not directly on this frontage, even though it is a city right-of-way. There is the closest one on Garden Way, it's about 300 to 400 feet. West Walnut Street within the right-of-way is about 700 feet, and along Mayfield Drive is about 1,300 feet. And we can see on the right image there that the one on Garden Way is the closest. Next, looking at the mass transit routes. This is actually somewhat close to an existing route. The purple route- The purple route stops and turns at the corner of Mayfield and West Walnut, which is about 600 feet away from the subject site. However, it is not immediately available in front of the site. Switching gears from the plan of services into the zoning assignment. Within this area of the city, it is primarily residential. The right-of-way of West Walnut and the properties closest to the site are zoned R2. There are variations of this. We can see the R2C within the Village of Beechwood subdivision. These are all single-family districts. And as noted, once again, the property owner is requesting a zoning assignment of R2. Within the county zoning, we are looking at a lot of R2, which is also another low-density residential. It is essentially the equivalent of the R2 within the Washington County zoning resolution. Looking at the Horizon 25 Future Land Use Map, this entire area has been assigned to place-type neighborhood residential. Taking a look at some of the appropriate land uses and desired characteristics for this place type, we can see the single-family is the most appropriate residential type. Within the characteristics, you can see all leaning residential and single-family, larger lots and moderate setbacks, which is essentially in line with what this property has as existing. Looking at the policies of the Horizon 2045, since there is a possibility of an extension of sewer service in this case, we would require a formal annexation. However, at this time, the applicant does have an existing septic system and is not requesting a sewer extension at this time. Looking back to the bridge plan, urban growth and services element map eight, this is in one of the areas that has been noted as recommended for annexation. There's no specific priority. However, that entire frontage in between Sunny Slopes and Matson was identified as recommended. Until this evening during public comment, there were a few phone calls of general questions of this annexation, questions about possible development of the site. However, there was no opposition to the actual request itself. Staff recommends, staff recommends approval of the plan of services and the zoning assignment. As the zoning district is compatible with the Future Land Use Map and the current zoning in the area, the requested zoning is adjacent to the property and does accommodate the existing use and the conditions of the site. And the plan of services has minimal impact on many of the city services apart from the two that are not readily available.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Questions for staff?
I do, Mr. McNamara, so if the, if the applicant isn't seeking connection to sanitary sewer at this time, what service are they seeking to avail themselves of?
They are most concerned with fire protection.
Okay.
It appears that there's been a gap there.
Mike? Thank you.
You keep me straight. It appears there's been a gap there of the sewer and the water section going back for decades. In their, according to the map that you had up there, there was sewer and water on the other side of it, was there not?
Correct.
Is this a gap or is this a waiting extension?
So as sewer has been extended in this area, and I can call Travis Olinger with Water Sewer to explain further, it appears that the existing subdivisions that were developed within the city had sewer extended at that time. However, this area just has never come into the city, therefore sewer was never extended in that portion in between.
I have a question. You had mentioned that the applicant indicated that they're currently on a septic tank.
Correct.
What happens down the road, let's say a couple of years from now, they decide they want city sewer? How does that work?
I will defer that.
Are we obligated then to make that connection?
I will defer that to our Water Sewer staff.
Ms. Olinger, could you come up, please? I think we've got a couple of questions that you might be able to help us with.
I believe the question was, if I could restate it, if, if in a couple of years, the owner requested sewer service, would we be obligated? And the plan of services spells out that sewer would be extended to the property within nine to 12 months of the request and receipt of the tap fee. So, so yes.
Okay.
What is the staff, the city's obligation to provide that service, assuming that it is requested sometime in the future? Is there an open end obligation? Is there a calendar obligation? Is it dependent on any other companion projects that might help support the financials?
It would be, at this point, it would be, it would just be hinging upon their request.
Their request, and then we would, the city would have an obligation to provide that service within some calendar time?
Yeah, nine to 12 months.
Nine to 12 months.
And there is a potential that it would serve additional properties, a few, not a whole lot, but it does have potential to serve additional properties.
And those would be county, or would they have to be annexed in order to tap in onto the sewer?
We would not have any, that would have to be determined at that, at that point. We, we look at it either as annexation or cost to benefit. If you're outside the city, if it will pay for itself, we will, and we can make it happen, we will extend sewer.
I don't know if I made my question clear. So if we approved this annexation and they decided to pay the tap fee and we moved sewer to this particular house, would other residents in that vicinity be able to also tap into the sewer?
It would. It would potentially, and the route we've, that we've scoped out would be to connect here and run down this property line. And the unfortunate thing is, and it would be challenging, we'd have to bifurcate this property here, which is outside the city limits, and it would make service available to that property if, if we were able to come to terms on easement there.
And so if not that?
And, and the backup plan would be, they have a, they have a onsite pump and force main that pumps it over to Garden Way, and we did evaluate both, knowing that it would impact this property quite a bit if we did have to get an easement and install a line across it.
Ms. Olinger, help me understand your structure, your department's structure for managing a cost of this nature that's not planned for in the budget. Or has this been planned for the budget or in the future budget? How do you cover this cost?
We budget every year for extensions, knowing they're going to happen. We don't know which ones they are, or where they're going to be, or when they're going to need it, but we earmark funds for, for extensions every year.
So you have money set aside for unforeseen extensions of service?
Yes, sir.
In, in theory, I mean, the, the financial breakeven analysis assumes that in year two, they would be looking for this to be connected. Is that right?
I'm not familiar. I didn't put that together. I'm sorry.
But, so, but I think what I understand is that they, they could be annexed into the city for the services that they're requesting and may not ever.
Within that analysis, we assume that it would happen as soon as possible. However, the cost benefit analysis is not technically part of the plan of services. So the cost ultimately falls on the City Commission. Plan of Services would be the Planning Commission.
Yeah. For $1,550, I don't know why they wouldn't do that pretty quickly.
I think we probably might assume that that could be, could be chosen, could very well happen. Let me ask you one other question. This money that's in, set aside in the water and sewer budget that's for unforeseen expenses for extensions, does that typically last for a whole year? Or is your crystal ball good enough to allocate an amount of money that covers these kinds of things historically?
It's not a blank check, but it is a perpetual fund that we, we know we're going to have to have extensions to be performed and funded.
Thank you. That helps me. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Olinger.
And just a reminder, there is a public hearing on this.
And as you said, I will open the floor for a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak to the question? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. Ladies and gentlemen, it's up to us for discussion.
And as this has happened in the past, we've restructured this with two recommendation points, one on plan of services and zoning assignment, just so we can provide that more specific information when it gets to the City Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just speaking for myself, I mean, I, I know we've seen a similar circumstance in the not-too-distant past. I, I really struggle with the notion of applying significant amount of city funds to, to a, to a small, to a small group, or in this case, unlimited, unlimited individual. I'm going to butcher her last name, but Ms. Carrad, I think at the beginning of the meeting spoke quite eloquently about it, and I find myself in agreeing with her. And I, I just, I don't, I struggled to understand why, you know, how it is in the city's best interest. In fact, it seems punitive to the existing residents of Johnson City to spend $48,000 to connect one additional lot. That just doesn't seem like a prudent use of our, of our resources to me, which are finite. If they weren't finite, that would be a different thing, but our resources are finite.
Further comment?
I think Ms. Carrad did a great job explaining things. You know, I thought, I think to Mr. McNamara's point, you know, the Planning Commission's consideration is about plan of services and zoning assignment. The financial consideration falls more upon the, the City Commission. And, and I always struggle with these smaller ones, too. And, and even probably more with the financial analysis. There's so many considerations. There'll be two property reassessments within a 10, this 10-year review that can't be assumed for. So the property tax revenue could be more. I would assume it wouldn't be less unless the house burned down, but we can't also assume for those considerations. So in my mind, this is a very conservative analysis of, you know, a worst-case scenario. It could be five years of property tax revenue and water service before they, you know, pull for sewer service. So I, I, if they're able to find a way for the sewer services to be provided, you know, I'd lean more in favor of this, this one in particular.
I think Commissioner Hunter had a good comment in the fact that our job is planning services. The commission's job is the financial end of it. Is that correct? So from a, from a planning services, in my opinion, this, this kind of makes sense. It falls in line with, you know, all of our Horizon 2045 guidelines. And so I would, I would be in favor of approving it, knowing that the City Commission is going to focus on the financial end of it.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, obviously the zoning assignment is appropriate. And I think the plan of service is appropriate. I always struggle with these from a financial standpoint, but if that's not our charge, albeit, I may not always agree with the, with the analysis. I will say that even though the cost was 48,000, there is some revenue generated. So it was really, I think the hit was what, 22,000, 26,000 is the net cost to our citizens. So it's not, we will generate tax revenue from the beginning, regardless of whether they tap in, so.
All right, further discussion. I'm open to a motion.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you have a comment, please go ahead.
I was just going to comment on the homeowners want and need to be in a professional firefighting district versus a volunteer one with the county. There's certainly value in that, but I feel as though the cost to the taxpayer for this small of a plot of land, I don't think the juice is quite worth the squeeze, Commissioners.
Further comments?
Have we had a public hearing on this? I forgot.
We did.
We did? I closed it?
You did.
I think we have somebody else. You did close it?
Yeah. Ma'am, do you want to speak to the question? Well, I'll, I'll reopen, as a courtesy to you personally, I'll reopen the floor. If you would like to come up and make a comment, you'll have three minutes. I'll reopen the floor for comment. Please come forward if you can give us your name and address, and if you're welcome to make your comments. If you get to the mic, go, go ahead.
The day, hi, and that's my house, 3319 West Walnut.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had the sewer system assessed and checked, and there's nothing wrong with it. I see no reason to change it now or later. The thought that if anything were to happen in my house, I'd have to wait for the firefighters from Embryville to come when the, the fire station is two miles down the road doesn't make sense to me. I don't know what else to tell you. You know, when we bought the house, we thought we were living in Johnson City, and we were kind of shocked to find out we weren't, but what else do you need to know or?
Do you have any questions for them? Those are helpful comments. Thank you very much. I'll close the floor now.
I'm going to make a motion for its approval. We'll see where it goes.
Okay, you have to make two motions.
And to accept the proposed plan of services.
Okay, thank you. Two seconds, is that two seconds? Let's, let's do one motion at a time, if we could, please. Could you just make one motion?
Motion, motion to annex.
To recommend the annexation?
And with the, with the zoning.
Let's just hold the.
I'll second, I'll second that one. Go ahead.
Thank you.
So any further discussion about the recommendation to annex the property? Ms. Hatfield, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
No.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, now, I'll entertain a second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning assignment as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a recommendation, a motion to approve the zoning assignment of R2, I believe, and a second, further discussion about the zoning assignment. Ms. Hatfield, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
No.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. All right, the last item is another, or the next item, 7.4, is another voluntary annexation on Boons Creek Road and Christian Church Road. Ms. McGrew's going to make that presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Callie McGrew with the Planner, with the Planning Division. This is a voluntary annexation of about 67 acres on Boons Creek Road and Christian Church Road. The City Commission approved the request to proceed for this proposal on August 7th. And if moved forward, final resolution, public hearing would be on October 2nd. The site is along Boons Creek Road and Christian Church Road. This is Bright Ridge and Boons Creek Christian Church. And this is the site, as I said before, 67 acres. The proposal is for a B4 commercial dis, or a, sorry, the zoning assignment request is a B4 request for a development of a commercial district, or commercial development. Current zoning in the surrounding area is B4, RP5, and R4. In the county, it's zoned PRPB D, or Planned Residential Business District and Agricultural. This area of the property is also in a special tax district overlay, which is the regional retail and tourism overlay. I might be butchering that, but I'm pretty sure that's what I said it was. The Future Land Use Map of 2020 and our Horizon 2045 Future Land Use Map. The future land use map of 2020 and our Horizon 2045 future land use map both designate this area as for commercial use. The plan of services has been put together by staff, and no comments have been provided that were negative or seemed problematic. The expense for this project is $165,052, with a revenue of $384,236, and break even at year three. Staff recommends approval of the plan of services and the zoning assignment. The property is adjacent to city limits and within the urban growth area. The property aligns with the Horizon 2045 growth future land use map, and the proposal is supported by the 2045 growth plan. It also meets several of our 2045 growth objectives. And here are your planning commission decisions. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
Ms. McGrew, I have a question. On January 4th, 2024, Anthony Todd's Traffic Engineering Manager, of course, he identified Exit 17 as one of the more dangerous exits on I-26. Has that data been updated or altered at all?
I will let Anthony speak to that this evening.
Okay, great. And then, another question I had for you was, just in terms of feasibility, do you, are you aware of any feasibility studies that have been done prior to the past couple of years? I know there was one done maybe like 2021, 2022, but is there a more recent one that's been shared with the city?
I will also let engineering answer to that as well.
Right. I meant more of an economic feasibility study, not so much a traffic engineering study. I don't know if there's anyone here to speak to that. That's okay.
Mr. Todd? Mr. Todd, could you come up and speak to a question of traffic management?
So, part of the process when we, when we get a new development is that we will pass to work traffic impact analysis. In this case, they will be working on that, and most of the time, we will ask for that to be after school starts. So, we do not have the traffic analysis yet, although we do believe that we know what the outcome will be. We just don't know the extent of the outcome. So, things like a left turn lane on Boons Creek Road, additional lanes on Highland Church Road, we're already planning on those. What we need to know from the traffic study is the length of the lanes, and the length of your turn lanes, whether it be the right turn lane or the, the decel lane, or the, or the left turn lane. So, those are the types of things we will get out of the traffic study. And as you look at the, the table here, it talks about the traffic impact studies, depends on how many trips are generated as to what level they have to go to. So, the bigger the development, the farther they have to go, such as going all the way to the interstate. So, there have been some studies on the other side of the interstate that do encompass that. This one may not, and this is TDOT standards, so we're following their standards as well. Did I answer your question?
You did. The agenda packet mentioned Egress, I think Egress Lane on Christian Church, but not so much on Boons Creek. But you said that there is some, at least thought, as to widening Boons Creek in that area to accommodate such a large parcel that's zoned B4?
This, the plan is to have one driveway on Boons Creek Road, but only one driveway. And as a result of that, there will be a right turn lane and a left turn lane on Boons Creek Road to accommodate that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Todd, this will all be much more thoroughly evaluated when we have some kind of a preliminary concept plan presented to us for approval, which would happen much further into the future.
Yes, sir. So, as soon as we have more concrete plans on exactly what is going to go there, we believe we know what's going there, because they've told us, but until it's actually put together, that's when we'll know.
Mr. Todd, I have one more question for you. In our agenda packet, it mentioned that the developer has a consultant for traffic, but it didn't give us a name, and we don't know if they have a professional engineering background, but I know that you do. So, can you attest to their, their ability to, to make that, that traffic impact study?
We always, when they tell us who it is that, that's going to do their traffic study, we will always know whether or not they're qualified to do. So, I have yet to been, be presented with one that was not qualified.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'll open the floor for public comment. Is the developer or his representative here? If you would, might have to come forward, and you might make comments, or if our staff, our commission may have questions. If you could please give us your name and address for the record.
My name's John Baker. I'm with Horned Properties, 412 North Cedar Bluff Road in Oxlton, Tennessee. We are planning a national grocery store at this location for Phase One, along with some co-anchored tenants, very small phase, first phase. We've got a lot of interest from outlaw-type users, C-stores, things of different restaurant use. We've been working very closely with the city staff on our planning efforts, and that's all been going very well. This is one stage of, the part of the property that we are buying is already B4. So, by doing so, a lot of the outlots on the Phase One have to be B4 as well to, for the intended use. So, that's why it triggered the annexation request. So, we are moving forward aggressively on all our design. I can tell that for the record that we are usually utilizing CDM Smith, their well-known traffic for the TIA. That is gonna be underway. They have been waiting for the schools to be underway to get the proper analysis they need to present to the city and the state.
Questions for him? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to the question in favor or against? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. So, now the question now is for us to discuss. This is another one of those two-motion items where we will be looking at proving the plan of service and recommending a zoning assignment.
Great location. It's, it's gonna be up to that point. I know there's been a lot of discussion about extending commercial all the way up to the bridge there, going on Boons Creek Road. So, this is a nice little anchor that would be in that particular section in there. Although, I will say, the traffic on Boons Creek Road is getting horrendous. I don't know what the long-term plans are, but at, at some point, it's gotta give, you know? There's gotta be something done out there.
Can you just pull up that map real quick with the green highlighting? No, there's one more. It's another map. A few more back. That's one. Commissioners, this map on the right is five years old. How do I know that? Boons Creek Elementary has not been on Christian Church Road for five years. So, as to my other commissioner's point, I live in the Boons Creek area as well, and I know that traffic's only gonna get worse if we approve this as B4 rezoning. I also have some questions, too, about whether this can be properly kept safe by Johnson City Police. I mean, just this last Saturday downtown, we had to have the Washington County sheriffs down there because Johnson City Police doesn't have enough of a presence, and I'm concerned that this will become a crime hotspot where it currently doesn't exist in Boons Creek. So, you know, for that, that reason as well, I'm also concerned about the, what the cost would be for that, to have additional Washington County police officers, or sheriffs, rather, in the Boons Creek tourism zone. And, you know, I'm, I'm glad to hear that there's, there's gonna be a major grocery store, but that is news to me. And, you know, I remember when we were, this commission, rather, was seeking a $20 million capital improvement from, from the Department, Tennessee Department of Revenue, and Commissioner Garagano basically said, there's not enough transparency, so I'm just gonna deny you this capital fund. So, I, I share his concern about transparency. I'm glad to hear there's going to be a grocery store there now, but that is news. And so, you know, it's really my recommendation that we defer action if we can get more information about what's going to be there, how are we going to handle the flood zone that's in that area. But really, my main concern is traffic, and then also keeping that area safe, just because Johnson City Police has proven that in a retail corridor, that safety is kind of coming second. So, that's, that's my two cents on this.
Did.
Thank you.
Did I, Mr. Todd, could you come back up for just a second? I could have sworn you said that you guys were gonna put a, a, a turning lane in. Is that right? Like a middle lane? Did I misunderstand you?
This is actually Wallace's slide, but I'll, I'll talk to it. So, Wallace has, has been working on this. So, there will be a turn lane added on Boons Creek Road, as well as Christian Church Road. Doesn't show that on this particular one, but this is what Christian Church Road would be done, or how it would be handled. So, there will be a, a bridge or culvert widening here, or replacement. We're working on that to deal with the creek. And then, there will be an additional lane added on Boons Creek Road for a decel lane, right turn lane, and also for a left turn lane.
What's your timing for, for that to be done?
I can't give you an exact timeframe at this time, but we're still under, working on that. It is probably in the two-to-three year range.
Two to three years?
Yes.
Boons Creek Road, are these both county roads?
Boons Creek Road is a state road, and it is in the city, and Christian Church, this part, is in the city.
So, funding the Boons Creek Road improvement, would that fall on the developer, or would that fall on the state, or would it be shared between the state and the city?
We will generally share on something like this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm gonna.
Mr. Todd? Oh, sorry.
Can I, oh, go ahead. I'll, I'll let you go first. You go first. Well, I was just gonna say that I, I personally feel like that this is a good use out in Boons Creek. You know, we've got so much development out there as far as residential and that sort of things, so to have a grocery store out there that, you know, the, the residents can go to, you know, and, and having another restaurant out there, I just don't, I just hope you don't take tenants away from the mall at Johnson City. Don't do what Pinnacle and what in the Pavilion did. Being a Fort Mill General Manager of the mall, that's why I had to say that. But, but seriously, I think that, that'll be good, a good use out there. It falls within all of our guidelines, and so I would be in favor of approving the annexation and the zoning services.
Yeah, I think you bring up a good point. You know, a lot of the traffic may actually be relieved for the simple fact that development is here versus having to drive further to go to restaurants or grocery stores. And I, I would just like to make a comment about policing. What is, downtown is totally different than what's being proposed here.
Yes.
And, and the police have sufficient capabilities and expertise to handle this, as well as downtown.
Well, the zoning may be a bit different, but it's a retail corridor is a retail corridor, even if it's B2 versus B4 zoning. It's going to be a group of people gathering in a retail space, and I just worry that we may not have the resources right now to, to keep that area safe. And again, Commissioner, you mentioned, you know, hollowing out the mall at Johnson City. You know, the median income in Washington County is $60,000 and $55,000 in Johnson City, and I'm just not positive that we could support these two large shopping centers, downtown, the mall at Johnson City, and then this new development at Boons Creek. I, I worry that we are green-lighting blight with this approval of B4 zoning.
I don't, I don't think this development is gonna be anything close to the size of the mall at Johnson City. You know, by the time you get a restaurant in there, by the time that you get a grocery store, there's probably only gonna be enough room for a couple more tenants.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'd like to echo some of the sentiment that has been expressed here. I think this is exactly the sort of development we were envisioning when we looked at, when we went through the exercise with the future land use map. I don't believe traffic is going to be an issue at all, as Mayor Hunter suggested. If anything, adding more local amenities may well take some, take some pressure away from, take some pressure away from the intersection with, with 26 there. With respect to police, I, this is, I don't think this is gonna be a hotbed of crime. I don't think it's gonna compete with, with the mall at Johnson City, or the other large strip malls in town. It's just not, this is not that kind of development. And again, the plan of services, I think, addresses any of those concerns as well. So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I'd make a move, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the plan of services as presented.
All right.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to recommend approval of the plant, plan of services as presented, and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Hatfield, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
No.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, now, so we addressed the issue of the plan of services. There's a remaining issue about the zoning assignment.
I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning assignment to B4.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to recommend the zoning assignment of B4 for the voluntary annexation at Boons Creek Road and Christian Church Road of approximately 67 acres, if I recall correctly. And I have a second for further discussion. Ms. Hatfield, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
No.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. Okay, we have one more item that's a relatively new item that I've worked with staff to develop, and that is gonna be some reports from staff on different issues that have resided and come before us in the past where action has continued. And it also, I might reserve some time at the end of that for comments from the chair, and it will be a chance for us to talk amongst the commission about issues that might be on our mind. Ms. Whitney?
Good evening, Commissioners. Whitney Hodges, your planning manager. What I would like to do is, I brought staff up here, but I'm just gonna go over these slides, so if you have some questions about what's up here, we can give you some further input. Before you, I believe it was last month, my months run together just a little bit, but we saw MINGA Drav. That might have also been, it was just July. And that was taken to the County Commission, but it was withdrawn before it went to County Commission. I do not know when they, if they want to submit back to County Commission, and we haven't heard anything, but we just wanted to kind of inform you what happened after it left you. The next one was the Data Center Text Amendment. That, at the end of that, with City Commission, one of the things that they, when they came to you, they also wanted to, we talked about a noise study, and so we're in the process of an RFQ with that, and the selection is being made. So, they will be doing that study in the next few months. The village is at Beechwood Bond. I'll let, that one is being, it came to you, but, this one came to them? And it actually is already completed, so it, it won't need to be released. So, it will just go away. The Horizon 2045 Plan, that does go for public hearing at the next city commission meeting with a final action on September 4th. And then, the other thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention is that the downtown parking study is underway. We had a pop-up event that was really successful at Main Street Days. We, from the consultant, we talked to at least 70 different people, and got, collected a lot of data points for that. That will be at the commission for their workshop in September. I don't know the exact time, but if you did want, if that's something that you're interested in, I just wanted to be sure that was on your radar. So, that's.
All right, questions about staff updates? I had one question. The Data Center Text Amendment issue around a noise study that's being conducted, or a, talking to a consultant, will that be presented as a new, another code amendment? Is that where you see this probably going?
I think you can do.
Just yell.
With the topics of the RFQ, we're looking at updates to the noise ordinance itself, so that's a city ordinance. It wouldn't be a zoning ordinance likely. However, at this time, we do not expect further zoning changes.
So, you would foresee that this might be a change to the ordinance? The?
Code, no. Yep, not the zoning.
I just was trying to clarify that. Any other questions for staff on any of these reports?
On the subject of updating codes and things like that, what about the signage ordinance? That's something that's been discussed. There's a wry grin, Mr. McNamara.
Yeah, that would be me, actually. We, we've looked at a lot of different processes, and with Whitney coming in, we're looking at all the processes. I know signage, there's a lot of different things. The code is very dated, and we are looking at those. We do have a couple drafts. No specific timeline on when those are coming, but something we are looking into.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I had another staff question. We are, we have a backlog item to look at our bylaws. Is there any activity going on with that? Is there any activity going on with that?
We haven't currently set an agenda for that, but we, at our next, when you and I meet next for our agenda, we can start looking at when we can plan that out.
Would you envision us trying to do that with a subcommittee?
We can do that, yes, we can do. It's probably best to kind of get together in a workshop with those that wanna work out those bylaws.
Okay, so we'll talk about scheduling a workshop on that topic, and that might produce a subcommittee to go off as a working group.
Correct.
Outside of a workshop. All right, perfect, thank you very much. Administratively, I would like to recognize that we have lost Mr. Bob Cooper, and welcome Laura Baumgartner to, to the planning commission. This is our first meeting, and thank you very much for your interest in supporting the city, and thank you for joining our commission. Well done.
Thank you, honored to be here.
Thank you. I would also say that Mr. Ben Dutton has been reappointed. He's completed his first three-year term, and has this just passed, been reappointed to the commission for another three-year term. And thank you, Mr. Mayor John Hunter, for agreeing to sit on the planning commission as a representative from the city commission. I really wish to appreciate all your, your efforts and your commitment, as well as all to the rest of you. Any other topics that the commission would like to raise with, with staff, or just to talk amongst us?
I guess I did have one item of, of a point. I believe I was appointed to fill out Mr. Dutton's term.
Mr. Cooper's term.
Mr. Cooper, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Please excuse me. And since I am no longer taking over his term, I do have a letter from Mr. Hunter that I'm, to be appointed to a three-year term, is that correct?
No, you, I, my understanding is you would fill one year that was left in Mr. Cooper's term, and then you would be eligible to reapply, to be reappointed for another three-year term.
I see, thank you.
Is that what you understand?
Yeah, I think, there were a couple letters that got sent incorrectly, with some confusion, so apologies on that.
That's all right.
Yeah, there's a structure to how commissioners are seated and, and up for reappointment or to be replaced, and, and Mr. Cooper, for personal reasons, needed to vacate the position in his third year, so we had to fill that third year, and then you'll be eligible to proceed.
Very good, thank you for that clarification.
I hope this is, will be a useful time in future meetings where we can talk amongst ourselves about issues that are on your mind, or issues that we wanna bring up with staff that would then trigger a workshop or follow-up research to be reported back.
I think it's a very important point to announce that I have my first great granddaughter as of day before yesterday.
Postive.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, any other business? You're just saying, I appreciate that. Any other business to come for the commission? See, seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting at seven minute, twelve minutes after seven.